Good morning and welcome to the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee. This morning, in attendance, we have with us the Deputy Chair of the Committee, councillor Paul Tully, we have Mayor Theresa Harding, Deputy Mayor Nicole Johnick and councillor Jim Madden. Do we have any parties, other parties than that? No. Just commence with the acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. Are there any declarations to be provided for this meeting at all? Any declarations of interest on matters relating to the agenda? There being no declarations, move to business outstanding, any business outstanding? There being none, confirmation of the minutes of the first, of the previous meeting? Which is item one of the report. I'll move that they be accepted. Do we have a second? Councillor Johnick, is there any discussion in relation to the minutes of the last meeting? There being no discussion, move to the vote. All those in favour? Against, that's carried unanimous. Item two, in relation to officers' reports, response to petition to build a playground in Wood End. Is there any questions before I? Any suggestion of questions in relation to this matter at all? I'll just move to the, to the General Manager, thank you. Mr Anderson, if you'd like to speak to the report?
Thank you Chair. In summary, this is a report concerning a petition received from the local community requesting council build a playground in the Ipswich suburb of Wood End. The recommendations are that Wood End Park be supported as a preferred location for the future provision of a playground to service the needs of the local community of Wood End. B, that based on project prioritisations, funding for the planning, design and construction of a playground in Wood End Park be given due consideration in the development of council's future Capital Works programme. And C, that the chief petitioner be advised of the outcome of this report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Anderson. Again, any, any questions in relation to that matter? No, is there any? I, anyone like to move that particular motion? I would, if not, I will move the motion or the recommendations that are contained in the report. Is there a second? Thank you councillor Johnick. Any discussion? Thank you Mayor.
Thank you Chair. I'd just like to acknowledge the residents of Wood End for bringing this petition to council. I think it's truly the community having a voice and, and giving their feedback to us. And I guess it allows council to have a thorough look at it and see what we, what our options are. So Wood End Park has been identified as a preferred location for a future playground to service the new, young families in Wood End. And we know, we have a lot of young families living in Ipswich and spaces being, these outside spaces are really important for so many families. I've received a handwritten letter recently from Jack and Charlie from Springfield if council would consider a playground at their local park, the Lloyd Bird Park. And we know that playgrounds are in hot demand and council actively looks for different areas as part of our service standards to have great places for physical activities and families to come together. I think this is timed really well as we start in the coming months, we'll start building our budget for the next financial year. So it's great to see and it gives us an opportunity to see what grants we can apply for as well. So, thank you Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If there's not, I'll just, I'd like to also commend the petitioners in relation to this. As we have discussed in this council fairly recently, the average age of Ipswich residents is dropping and particularly in the Wood End area. We, the average age of our, the demographic in that area is dropping as well. So we're seeing a lot more families coming to our inner suburbs, suburbs that were once the domain of our older age groups. We're seeing families move in, which is great. And the demand for a park in that location is certainly quite welcome. And obviously look forward to meeting with the petitioners and advising them of their success moving forward. And I look forward to progressing this in our future budget discussions to ensure that we can deliver upon that, that pledge. No further discussion. I put the recommendations to the vote. All those in favour? Against, that's carried unanimous. Item three, the IGO Parking Action Plan. Are we aware if there's any questions in relation to the matter before I?
Yeah, I have some questions.
Yes, thank you councillor Tully. I might just ask Mr Anderson to introduce the report and also call up the relevant officer please.
Thank you Chair. This is a report concerning the development of the IGO Parking Action Plan, the PAP, a key deliverable of IGO, the City of Ipswich Transport Plan. The recommendations are that the IGO Parking Action Plan and the summary report as detailed in the attachments one and two to the report by the senior transport planner dated nine August two, twenty twenty four be adopted. Recommendation B is the outcomes and key messages of the IGO Parking Action Plan be communicated to the community. And I might ask James MacArthur to approach so that we can ask relevant questions.
Thanks James. If, Mr MacArthur, if you could please introduce yourself and, and your position, thank you.
James MacArthur, Senior Transport Planner.
Thank you. Questions councillor Tully?
I'll just make the comment, I'll say this later, that I think it's a good trend that we're moving to a wider than just a CBD approach to the IGO parking issues. Just wanted to clarify, besides that, with, with the, the proposed parking precincts, and I find this fairly detailed, in, in particular, could you just outline? In the report, it, it talks about, I guess, the ultimate in terms of development and how that would transition over a short number of years and a longer number of years. So, so with Springfield, for example, where it's still developing and Australia Avenue is a good example where there were some two-hour parking signs there, twenty-four, seven, which are no longer there because the parking is unable to be utilised. But how, how would that transition to, to the ultimate where? What we've got now is open parking and then two, two-hour parking might be needed. So are we talking about a decade or what's your general thoughts on that?
I guess it's really dependent on the, I guess, the timing of the, the land use and, and when that comes on board. I don't know off the top of my head when the land use is north of the train station will, I guess, mature. But we, as part of the Parking Action Plan, we have developed parking precincts and then curbside hierarchies, which I guess specify what, I, I guess, what we should be looking to prioritise in the curbside space. I can acknowledge that some of the land uses aren't mature. But we, there is an action within the Parking Action Plan which calls to develop parking precinct plans. And those will, I guess, specify the transition to, I guess, what has been identified in the curbside hierarchies as, I guess, the intent for the precinct.
So just on that, what's called the Springfield Town Centre Parking Precincts. What happens at Town Centre North, just north of the railway station? The timing of that could be quite different from the vicinity development, which is, you know, into Augustine Heights.
Yep.
And I guess around the Marty Hospital, yeah, another precinct where, where that's a very busy precinct at the moment. So, am I right in just saying it could be any, it could be now or it could be some years away depending upon development?
Yeah, the, the actions within the Parking Action Plan cause out a few parking precincts, which would look to start developing precinct plans, I guess, immediately. And then there's another caveat there which says as demand warrants. So I suspect that would be in the case of your Town Centre North, there's nothing really there at the moment. But once the land use matures, then we could look to develop a parking precinct plan and make changes accordingly.
Okay, now it says in the report, this is just my final query, page thirty-five. We had a councillor workshop in June of twenty twenty-three. We haven't had a workshop since then on this overall issue.
No, not, not with the new council. There's been at least one briefing note, but no workshop.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Yes, thank you, Mr MacArthur. Is there any further questions? I've just got a few myself. And firstly, I just want to commend the report, the, the amount of work you've done in relation to this, as you have in other previous IGO matters that have been brought before us. Extremely detailed, heavy document that, you know, even I myself have had difficulty trying to get my head around. And, and I know as councillor Tully just mentioned, there hasn't been a briefing of this particular report of the new council since, since its elections. So there are some areas that probably go right into the depth of it that, and I spoke with councillor Tully just before about potentially, and as well as some of the officers, but potentially taking this matter off for a briefing in order to get down to the, the true nuance of it. As I've said, one of the matters that confuses me is the, the terminology of going from demand management to demand satisfaction. So, and I guess that there is some examples of how that works that probably are probably a bit too complex maybe to explain here, or can you do that?
I can give it a go.
Give it a go.
I guess it would be transitioning from a demand satisfaction approach to a demand management. And I guess that, that mental, or that methodology is identified within IGO itself and it's just been carried through to the, the Parking Action Plan. But essentially, demand satisfaction is, community wants X amount of parking, we're going to give them X amount of car parking to satisfy their demand for, for wanting to, to drive and park. Demand management is acknowledging that we, we can't necessarily afford to do that or it doesn't necessarily align with our transport objectives. So we look to make use of existing car parking first before we, we look to manage supply. So that could be through time restrictions, it could be through pricing, getting that turnover of car parking. This is not to mention, I guess, demands from, I guess, the private sector. If they want to provide more parking, then they can provide more parking. This is just purely council's approach.
And, and this plan is to really to a five-year plan?
Typically.
Or roll out?
Typically, well, we have medium-term action, so that's within a five to ten-year horizon. So ten years is probably the extent of the plan.
Is there any further questions? Yes, Mayor.
If I, if I may Chair, probably one of the biggest challenges we have in parking, especially in Ipswich Central is in the education precinct area, especially around, obviously, St Mary's and it is grammar work. Ipswich Grammar School is the oldest high school in Queensland, so they don't have that there. How will we be incorporating that or can you make sure that that's covered when we do have a workshop? Because that's probably the, a huge demand that we get from residents and, and how we can lobby Education Queensland because it's, yeah, there doesn't seem to be enough parking spots or drop-offs and pickups. So how will that be covered?
So that, that will be covered through, well, the education precinct is a precinct and there's a, there's a management framework there. There is an action in there which, in, in the report, which I guess it's for council to develop a, essentially a green travel plan template for, for schools to actually take responsibility and to help themselves as much as they can. They, they can't necessarily rely on council to provide more parking. There, there are ways to manage that demand. Schools can help themselves with, with council support as well. But when, when we do look to develop a parking precinct plan for education, we'll need to have a great look at the education precinct and identify opportunities and challenges and how we're looking to, to manage that.
Thank you, thank you Chair.
Thank you. Is there, does the committee see a need for us to take this off for a further briefing perhaps of councils offline? Yeah. Yes, okay. Well, that's, that's the way I would sort of move, if that's the way we're looking towards with respect to the recommendations. So is there any further questions of the officer? Thank you, Mr MacArthur.
Thank you.
Good job, thank you. Would someone like to move the motion or a motion in relation to this matter?
Well, there's, is no motion before us, so I'll, I'll move, so without having to move an amendment, but just a change.
Sorry, the recommendations, yeah.
Sorry. I'll, I'll move paragraph A with the following change, to delete the word adopted and insert received instead of the word adopted. So, so, so it's not an amendment to the motion, it's just, I'm just.
Yes, understood, yeah.
And the paragraph B, read that a councillor workshop be held to consider the report. I'll just say that again for the committee clerk, that a councillor workshop be held to consider the report. And, and can I just say that we, we probably don't need an addition to say to bring it back here because that'll, that'll flow from the, the workshop, yeah.
Um, that, may I ask a question of the General Manager? Do we think that that could be handled between now and the next round of committee?
We can certainly work to, I guess I'll have to consult the CEO in terms of the priorities around workshops, but certainly we will be able to move quite quickly to present a workshop, yeah.
We'll do our very best, absolutely, yeah.
I don't think there's necessarily any particular conjecture around it, it's just to ensure that councillors are fully briefed on its implications. Thank you. So you'd like to move, you've moved that motion? And seconded by councillor Johnick. Any discussion? Yes, Mayor Harding?
If I may Chair, I think it would be really good, as part of this discussion with our community is, is education as well.
Correct.
In particular, though, those school areas where it is the responsibility of Education Queensland for the parking and the pick-up and drop-off. But we consistently give advice to the department and they consistently don't take our advice. And, and then Ipswich City Council and the police come in and ask to do compliance. So we're seen as the bad guys when it was planned all along. So I guess I'm really keen to see what we can do to advocate, but also, you know, the, the importance of the, the pick-up and drop-offs and why it's so important for, for parents to, and carers to follow that. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes councillor Johnick?
Just noting what councillor Tully said in relation to having a workshop, I support that obviously. And it's really just about understanding the practicalities of how this will work in our specific area as development occurs so that we're across it and can be across it for our community. It's just that, that content that I need, but understand that it's, it's overdue and it's necessary to, to be adopted. So, and I think the offices for the work, it's just that, that missing piece I need.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that when you look at it, it is a relatively data-heavy report, but very well put together by the officers concerned. And it's just the nuances of how it will apply and how we can get that understanding, which I think is the reason for it. And as there's no real haste in implementing it or adopting it, I feel another four weeks wouldn't hurt for us to have that understanding. Again, any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, put, yes, sorry councillor Tully.
Just close the debate on that?
Yes, happy to.
Just, just very briefly, I was intrigued with the, the two descriptors of demand management and demand satisfaction. I can tell you, if someone gets a parking ticket, there's not much satisfaction in that.
Yeah, and there's certainly a few demands that come our way.
We, we need to be conscious of the fact of, you know, that this does affect people. People who for many years may have been able to park in a particular area and, you know, used to particular facilities. And councillor Johnick and myself are acutely aware of that in the eastern suburbs around Springfield Central. So there's lots of questions to ask. I endorse what you say, that it's a very detailed report. But we need a level of comfort that we understand what it is. I think the, the words about the transition to some of these changes are over a period of time. And that, I think that's important for us and the community to understand. The mayor, mayor mentioned, you know, in relation to the community and education programmes, I think that's very important. So that will give us the opportunity to really feel comfortable, you know, to avoid a situation where just because it's a very detailed report, we still need as the representatives of the community to be able to speak with the community ourselves and explain where it's heading and why it's heading.
Very good. There being no further discussion, put the motion to the vote. All those in favour? Against, that's carried unanimous. Now on to item four, asset and infrastructure services department capital delivery report. Mr Anderson, would you like to speak to that report? Thank you.
Thank you Chair.
I'll introduce it.
This is a report concerning the performance of the capital delivery by the asset and infrastructure services department for the month of July twenty twenty-four. The recommendations are that the, the report on capital delivery by the asset and infrastructure services department for the month be received and the contents noted. The only thing I'd add in addition Chair is you'll note that the Capital Works Programme achieved a spend of six point three one million in line with the budgeted six point three four million for the month of July. A very strong commencement to the year, which is very pleasing with asset rehabilitation spend one point one eight million against the adopted budget of one point one nine million for the month of July.
Is there any questions of the General Manager or officers concerned? Yes councillor Harding, sorry Mayor Harding.
I've just looked, I know with Red Bank Plains Road, are we still on track to finish that by the end of the year?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. And how about the SGA, the Springfield Greenback Artory, all those, that's stage three, how's that going?
Stage three again, still on track for delivery in line with the timeline, so December twenty-four. And Springfield Parkway is still online for delivery at this stage by June in twenty twenty-five, so still on target.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Mr Anderson, thank you Chair.
Any further questions? There is a recommendation, would somebody like to, it'll be received and noted. Moved by councillor Johnick, seconded councillor Madden. Any discussion? There being no discussion, put the motion to the vote. All those in favour? Against, that's carried unanimous. We now move on to item five, excuse me a moment. Which is the manager of development planning, thank you, Mr Anderson. Exercise of delegation report. Is there any questions in relation to the exercise of delegation by the manager of development planning? There being no questions, the recommendation is that the report be received and noted. Do I have a mover of the recommendation or otherwise? Thank you councillor Madden, the seconder. I shall second. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, move the motion to the vote. All those in favour? Against, that's carried unanimous. Now to, that was five, I believe. We have item six, which is matters before the Planning and Environment Court. Status report in relation to those matters. Is there any questions in relation to item six?
Yes Chair, I've got some questions of the report writer Greg Potter.
Yes, call upon.
So Mr, Mr Potter's unwell also, but Mr Bowles, Mr Bowles is ready, willing and available and able.
Mr Bowles, have you been hanging around the, the?
No.
GM or Mr Potter lately? That we have to be concerned?
No, all good.
All good, very good.
Good morning, Anthony Bowles, Development Planning Services Manager.
Thanks, Mr Bowles. Just some questions about who are the applicants, respondents and a couple of these applications. Just want to clarify, with the matter involving chief stays? That's just a simple matter where chief stays have lodged a development application. We've declined it and they've taken it to the Planning and Environment Court?
That's correct.
Have we had mediation as yet?
There were, without prejudice, discussions about the, the decision that council made. I, I can actually provide an update to that.
Okay.
There has been a fairly significant update in that the matter has been resolved.
Oh, okay.
The judgment was handed down, I think, two weeks ago, last week maybe. Unfortunately, the appeal was allowed in the applicant's favour.
Okay.
So the judgment is quite an interesting judgment. It provides a lot of, I think, helpful case law in, with respect to the assessment of. law in, with respect to the assessment of flood emergency management plans, which is really, was the basis of the council's decision in the first place, so being a property that is heavily affected by flooding, councillor did not support the proposal on the basis of the risk to users of the facility during a flood, the short warning times and the difficulties in evacuating the facility. Through the appeal process, there was, without prejudice, discussions about the management plan and the views of the experts from both parties, and ultimately that there was an agreement, so it led to a trial, and the, the judges accepted the evidence of the appellant's expert in that regard and determined that the, the management plan or the, the level of risk associated with the management plan was acceptable, which is contrary to the views of the officers at the time making the decision.
Was it a significant issue that we're dealing with campers and caravans that can easily, be easily removed?
That, that was part of the decision-making of the judge, which is different to other scenarios, and really, probably one of the strong learnings from this process and for us and every other council is that the flood emergency management plan is one part of the discussion, there is also a further conversation about the management practices in an emergency coordination approach, so it's a different field of expertise in a way, it's one thing to consider timeframes for flooding, warning times, levels of inundation and levels of risks, there's another element that is coming out, coming out through this case law about site management and coordination of residents in, in an evacuation process, so that was the part that was teased out during the appeal and is, is really helpful and interesting information in judgment.
Yeah, I agree, it's a very significant case for all local government.
Absolutely, yeah.
In Queensland. The other question I was going to ask you is to do with the matter involving the shopping centre of Diamond Tina Boulevard. Just wanted to clarify, we, is this how it worked? We approved a change, a minor change to the original development application and then a submitter objected to our approval, is that correct?
I may have to take this notice on question, but I think, sorry, this question on notice, I think it's actually the other way around, I think we've approved it.
Yes.
So, sorry, the, the court has approved an, an application to change and approved, an application that's been approved by the court, you actually need to go back to the court to seek change, so occasionally a decision that has been decided through that process, you know, several years later when they come to the, the part of where they would normally be doing the detailed design of the proposal and getting a better feel for how the, the facility would work, in the normal sense, we, we quite frequently get changes to approvals to adjust small details. One of the unfortunate aspects of going through the Planning and Environment Court is you actually have to go back to the court rather than the council to change that approval.
So that being the case, was it the case that we declined the development application, then it went to the court and got approved, and now there's a minor change to the decision of the court, so it has to go back to the court?
Essentially, yeah.
That's it there?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it, it isn't really a matter of we're having an argument about a decision, we're, we're just having to go through a process where the court is the decision-maker and therefore has to make the, the change to the decision.
And the minor change involves more house lots?
I think a lot of, well, some of the details are here, it is, is more to do with the operational aspects of the parking and access, there's fairly substantial retaining walls that need to be constructed, just because it's, if you've been to the site, it's, it's here. So I, I'm not sure if there is necessarily change to lots and things like that, I do know that since this approval was issued, Woolworths and other grocery stores have been in the process of changing their servicing layouts for the direct-to-boot sort of system, so combination of those sort of factors and just getting the feel for the site now has led to them needing to change and update the design, certainly something that was approved in 2014 and probably designed in 2013 or 12 is, is no longer really relevant in current supermarket design.
It's an interesting process, have to go back to the court.
It's interesting, but it can lead to outcomes fairly quickly.
Yeah.
It's, you know, it's just one of those extra steps where maybe solicitors have to get involved.
Thanks very much for clarifying those two issues for me.
Yeah, no problems at all.
Thank you councillor, any, yes councillor Tully?
Yes, briefly on that, so I understand why it's got to go back to the court because it's a court decision, but those, the minor changes, let's assume they are relatively minor, in the normal course of events, if it was our original approval without a court decision, we could just agree to those minor changes.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, yeah, some time ago. Okay.
Yeah, that's, that would be the normal process.
It probably is, I think you'd agree that because it is a court decision, you know, you wouldn't want the council unilaterally if there were original objectors, it's just having the council, you know, change the approval however minor it might, might have been, you know, without the court supervising that.
Yeah, I, I agree, and that, that is generally, I think, the, the mindset of that part of the act.
Any further questions? Yes, Mayor Harding.
To the Chair, Mr Bowles, I'm on development, oh, and I can't see the decision of the courts.
For cheap stays?
Yeah, that particular 19904, I thought it was there before when I.
I, I will arrange to have that posted online, it should be available, it is available on E-courts by searching the appeal number, but we, we normally have that, so I will arrange for that when I get back to my desk.
Yeah, tips, also the, the application, yeah, I've looked at it. I'd like to ask, I understand the separation of powers and, and so on, I guess I'm trying to correlate the fact that the state and federal governments have invested heavily in a voluntary home buyback to make sure that, you know, vulnerable residents aren't in those flood areas, and this area has significant flooding, and when you look through the flood management plan, their, their flood management plan is evacuate and go to an evacuation centre basically. Is there any training of magistrates on, you know, on flood overlays or the voluntary home buyback scheme or things like that, how does that happen for magistrates?
I'm not sure what level of train they have on specific areas of expertise, a lot of their decision-making comes from the evidence of the experts, and during the, during a judgment, or during, sorry, during a, a hearing, the, the solicitors on either, or the barristers on either side will cross-examine the experts and the experts' opinions will be really thoroughly explained to the finest detail, because when you think about it, you've got, you've got two opposing experts, experts who have a different opinion and have attempted to explain their opinions or come to agreement, and at the end of that, they've normally got a fairly substantial report where they've explained the differences in opinions, and then they go one step further during the hearing with the barristers cross-examining and teasing out all the details of how their opinion has been formed, and that would include going to minute details about how the, the flood risk or the emergency management plan will function. So you could in a way say that the trial or the hearing is the, all the training that they could possibly get for that particular scenario, because they've got two exits, experts in that field and then two barristers interrogating those experts, so they, they really are quite thorough in their discussions about those aspects and they, they basically learn what they need from that, that session. And the, the judgment then goes on to explain their, their reasoning for taking one, essentially taking one view over another, and the, a lot of the time those opinions are formed over years of case law, in this case, there's a growing amount of case law relating to FEMPs, and this just, this gets on the pile. So previously, this council contributed to that case law with the Blankink Appeal, which was a childcare centre that had a FEMP that was considered by that judge to be not appropriate, so we won that appeal, or our decision was upheld, and that, that sort of set a baseline for that type of use. There hasn't been a huge amount of scenarios where a caravan park has been the subject of the conversation, we've had lots of applications here and in other councils about permanent accommodation, we've had childcare centres, but something where the, the residents are potentially mobile is something that needed to be considered in the case laws, so it's a bit of a, a bit of a niche use to have in that really specifically flooded type of environment, and the, the really strong factor in favour of the appellant was the, the fact that the vehicles can be moved and the belongings can be moved quickly.
So I've just, does that mean everyone there will be temporary, so can we condition it that people can only stay there for two weeks, three, or something like that, are we able to do something like that? Because traditionally, you know, it is in the middle of a suburban area, people might be, be housed there more permanently.
We, we are able to create conditions, but they will still need to be agreed by the appellant and accepted by the judge, so limitations of those sorts of things may be considered, but the main tool that we will have to ensure that there aren't negative outcomes and, and more people at risk of the hazard will be through the conditions that relate to the, the way that flood risk management planning is carried out, so we, what we'll be doing is taking parts of the management plan and making them conditions in a sense, by saying, you must do this part of the management plan and this thing, and if the management plan has limitations on the length of the stay, yeah, that, that's something we could do, but we, we will be guided essentially by the expert and the, or our expert as well, on what is the appropriate way to prevent long-term, long-term residents from setting up there, because you, you are correct, longer-term residents tend to be less mobile, less able to pack things up and move.
And they may not actually have a car to move as well, I guess, I was concerned, Mr Bowles, their evacuate, or their flood management plan, just reading from, from it now, as the slot allows for evacuation, it's considered that evacuation is the preferred strategy rather than sheltering in place, and they go on the fact that they'll be going to the council evacuation centres, so that is their plan.
That, that is part of the plan?
So.
The conversation or part of that as well is, that is one of the places that a person could evacuate to, one of the points that was made is that those people who are evacuating are able to evacuate to other places if they choose, so that, that would be one of the options for evacuation, but going to really anywhere where the vehicle can be camped, like another car, caravan park in another city or another part of the city, would also be an appropriate response for those, those reasons, they can just get up and choose to move somewhere else, but certainly, you, you are correct, part of the management plan does talk about the evacuation centres being one of those places that they could go to.
Thank you, Mr Bowles, thank you, Chair.
Any other questions? Just in relation, and I agree with you, Mayor, there's an incredible amount of onus on us, should things go awry with this site, but more importantly, I think we are going to have to have an incredible amount of inspections, number of inspections on a regular basis to ensure that they are adhering with the conditions, because if they aren't, they are not going to be prepared in the case of an emergency, and, and again, we've seen it before with, particularly with caravan parks and permanent or semi-permanent residents in those locations where they are ill-prepared, their mobile home, if I can use that term, whether it be a caravan or otherwise, can go into such disrepair as it's unable to be relocated, so, or it's, they have their setup so permanent almost, that it's impossible to do so in a quick space of time, so we're going to have to, it's going to be quite resource-intensive upon us no matter what, so, and I do carry a great deal of concern, which I'm, I know that my co-councillor in, councillor Doyle also shares very similar concerns, did you wish to say something councillor Doyle?
Then we consider the matter on a broader scale.
Fair enough, yeah.
And I'm happy for all councillors to be involved there.
So did you have a question councillor Doyle? No. Sorry, well, if there's no further questions, the recommendation is to receive a note, you'd like to move councillor Tully? And I'll second, I thank you to Mr Bowles. Then is there any discussion? No discussion?
I don't have anything to add, but if, if any councillor as a committee member or otherwise, I think we should listen.
You do, Mayor Harding.
I do, thank you, Chair, obviously I think this was a unanimous decision back on the 15th of September 2022 of this council, and, and some of the reasons that we, we, you know, we accepted the council officer's recommendation and we were fit very strongly was that the proposal represented intensification of residential uses within a flood-affected area on land situated, you know, below the adopted flood regulation levels, the proposal didn't avoid natural hazard areas or didn't, you know, avoid them at all, and, and the proposal actually hinders disaster response for our city as well, that, that's some of the, the reasons, so I'm, I, I am perplexed about the decision, I'm obviously not a lawyer or a judge, but I, I do know that the federal state government have had, spent considerable money on the voluntary home buyback scheme, there's so much, they've invested so much to, to support people who are vulnerable, I'm just very concerned that the people here might be more, more of the vulnerable people in our community.
Yes.
And, you know, they may not have cars, it's not going to be easy, and, you know, this is another impost for us in a response for disaster recovery and evacuation centres, but, yeah, I'm just really concerned that we're putting people in, in very vulnerable, vulnerable people in even more vulnerable situations. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Johnic.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, completely agree, agree with the mayor's comments, and I think that there's a, there seems to be a practicality gap between the judgment and then what happens on the ground, you know, when the notifications are received maybe to evacuate, are prior to evacuation centres even being established, I'm worried about the precedent this sets for other, you know, areas of development in our city, and we know that what's on paper doesn't reflect the actions that can happen on the ground, people don't want to leave, people are, there's language barriers, like we talk about, you know, evacuation management plans on site, but there's so many variables that can happen, and we, we all know this because we've all experienced it, and, and that scares me, that worries me. Thank you.
Councillor Tully? I was just going to add that, yeah, I'm deeply disturbed by the fact that the Planning and Environment Court seems to be out of step with what the state's desired outcomes are for, for these types of locations and the requirements with respect to emergency outcomes, so it does seem to fly in the face of that, and I'd like to think that the Planning and Environment Court would not see this as a typical outcome moving forward. Yes, councillor Tully?
Doyle, have a query.
I'm, I'm sorry, thank you, councillor Doyle, I can't quite see you because of the chair.
Thank you, Chair, I, yeah, would just like to note the record, I too am deeply troubled by this decision, when it came to us as a divisional councillor for that area, I'd heard from a lot of residents who were opposed to the development for, you know, a lot of concerns around the increased pressure on the local road network, but, but predominantly it was about the flooding, many of my residents there have lived there long-term, they know how quickly the water rises, I, I too am perplexed, I, I really don't know what the, what we need to be doing here to support our community, because we are going to see some of our most vulnerable residents moving into that space, and it's going to become a huge problem in times of flood, so I'm not sure what our options are, but definitely want to have a discussion around investigating those options.
If I may make another comment, Chair?
I'm, I'm happy to open it up to you again, Mayor Harding.
Thank you very much, Chair, thank you for your attitude, I was just going through there, there was over 70 submissions made, not all properly made, but there were over 70 submissions from local people, this wasn't a, you know, a whole few people were overseas writing in, these were, these were local people who had written in and put submissions in, objecting to it as well.
Councillor Tully?
Yeah, thanks very much for that, it, it's amazing that we've got a buyback scheme referred to by the mayor, endorsed and funded by the state and federal governments, and principally to, just in a few words, to take people permanently out of the, and homes out of the flood zone, and we've got a decision of the Planning and Environment Court putting people back into the flood zone, so that there is a real dichotomy between what the state and federal governments are wanting to achieve and, and the certain fact that there will be flooding on this property again in the future, you know, it's like two steps forward and, yeah, one step back in relation. two steps forward and, uh, yeah, one step back in relation to this. And I'm always, I've, I've never sort of criticised the Planning and Environment Court, um, but it, it's very perplexing, I'll say that, that we've, we've had a decision of, of this nature. And management plans that have been, uh, mentioned councillor Johnic was referring to that, they're well and good, um, but, but in practice, there are real difficulties, in January two thousand and eleven, when the, um, the flood, uh, came to Ipswich, and I can speak about Goodner in particular, there were two police cars, uh, dispatched to the northern side of the railway line to, to attempt to, um, get people to evacuate and to move out, in a lot of ways, um, that was unsuccessful, but people were, um, you know, trying to do not that, that area in about three to four hours was impossible. And as it ended up, those two police cars, um, their, their means of escape were, were themselves, uh, were in, uh, they couldn't get out under the two underpasses of Goodner, they then parked in the railway car park and, um, by the, uh, next day, um, those two, um, uh, police vehicles had been destroyed. So even with the best will in the world and the best sort of preparations, um, there are going to be, you know, major difficulties um, in the future. I, I think the state government in relation to this decision in the Planning and Environment Court, the state government needs to look at the legislation to see if that is really the intent of what, what the state and federal governments are trying to achieve, um, and that is taking people out of the flood zone. And even if the court is, is legally and, uh, uh, right i- in its interpretation and i- in its, uh, decision of the way the, uh, planning scheme is and our planning scheme and the legislation are of course approved by the state government, I think the, um, state government has to urgently, uh, look at this situation, because what was mentioned, uh, before about a precedent in a, in cases like this, this won't just be a precedent for other development applications in Ipswich, it'll be a precedent for other development applications right across the state of Queensland, so I would hope that this is an opportunity for the state to urgently review the planning legislation.
Uh, if I may councillor Tully, um, and just seeking your knowledge, um, of the L G A Q and the conference in general, is it, um, is it an opportune, uh, matter to raise as a late item at the L G A Q conference?
Well, there've been, uh, two meetings of the motions, uh, committee, one, one, um, yesterday and the, that was the one I attended, uh, because it was a split group because of availability, um, I'm, I'm prepared to talk to the president, um, oh, the acting president, um, the mayor of Gladstone, um, if we can craft a, uh, a, a late motion. Um, and it was, it's up to his decision whether or not that goes to the conference in late October. And I know we'll be in caretaker mode in the state and changes to legislation just don't happen in a few days or a few weeks, but I think we need to move briskly in relation to this, and I think most councils, uh, with flood issues would be supportive of that, so, um, just to answer that, I might ask the C E O if we could, um, get, um, a, a, a late motion drafted and I'll use my endeavours to have that placed before the conference, um, at the end of October.
Thank you councillor Tully, I think it is opportune, yeah.
So, sorry, certainly through the chair, certainly can do.
Thank you, thank you, uh, C E O, yes, I think it's, uh, quite opportune, uh, for us in light of this, uh, uh, and perhaps, um, there may be other matters that come before us, or may even very well be before us at the moment, that, um, uh, may see this as a precedent that we don't necessarily want to, uh, see, uh, reoccur. So, um, the, uh, obviously the recommendation has been made, the motion, uh, I, um, I, um, move it to, to the vote or put it to the vote, all those in favour, against, that's carried. Uh, that is the end of the, uh, the agenda per se, however, there is a request, um, pursuant to clause seven of the Ipswich City Council Standing Committee's terms of reference. Uh, we've had a request that councillor Doyle, uh, join this committee, we now have a vacancy obviously with the resignation of councillor Cullen. Um. I'd like to, um, make that a formal motion, um, to that, um, to that wording, um, that pursuant to clause seven of the Ipswich City Council Standing Committee's terms of reference, councillor Doyle be appointed to the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee, um, and that will come into effect, um, from the next round of committee, I would imagine. Um, would someone like to second that motion? Yes, sorry councillor Tully, did you speak?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
Yes, thank you.
But just say that I think it comes into effect, um, after the next, at the next council meeting.
At the next.
When it's approved.
Yep. So, resolved, oh, yes, correct. Um, so, um, uh, that I've moved, seconded councillor Tully, uh, any questions or discussions? There being no discussion, put the matter to the vote, all those in favour, against, that's carried unanimous. Thank you, and, um, now the motion for the next meeting to commence, the time is now, the meeting is now closed at nine fifty-one. Um, I move that we recommence at ten past ten, shall we? Um, for the inclusion of a morning tea, um, for the commencement of the Finance and Governance Committee, sorry, just to get the correct terminology, um, seconder, uh, councillor Johnic, all those in favour? Against, that's carried. Thank you, meeting closed.